Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Monday, June 14th, regular school board meeting. Before we begin the work of the district, let us all stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a few changes to tonight's agenda. We're going to pull items 8.17 and 10.06. Those are two contracts that need some additional work before we bring them back to you. We also have in front of you an emergency item that we're going to put under discussion that Ms. Turner will speak to regarding the amendment to the agreement with the Florida Department of Health. Are there any other changes to tonight's agenda, Board?
Board members?
No.
No Superintendent.
All right, we'll move into the approval of the minutes. I recommend approval of the minutes from the School Board Workshop, May 19th, 2021, the executive session for bargaining, May 24th, 2021, and the regular school board meeting, May 24th, 2021.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five a.
The bond representation. And first up is Dr. Feltonner. She'll be recognizing the regional executive directors and the completion of the AASA National Principal Supervisors Academy.
Good evening. It's nice to be here.
Yes.
Chairman Superintendent, Board members. Last summer, I don't know if you remember, but you approved the opportunity for the three regional executive directors to attend the AASA National Principal Supervisor Training. And while the pandemic made it challenging to continue our professional learning, it did not stop these three executive directors from being willing to commit to this learning. It was a year-long training. It worked through problems of practice, using cycles of inquiry, learning from case studies, utilize virtual professional learning communities, and virtual individual coaching. And this training had homework, lots of it. So upon successful completion of the program, participants receive an actual diploma of completion. And it's a valuable piece in addition to their professional portfolio. I have to tell you that they've already started planning based on new learning and thinking about how they can lead forward and to support principals next year. So I'm proud tonight to represent the regional executive directors and present diplomas of completion to all three of them. And so if you'll help me in congratulating Renee Dudley, Rob Feltonner, and Steffi Mouski, you guys will come on? You often ask me, so I want to thank you again for the approval of this because you often ask me like, can we hear about the impact? And I will tell you that this training definitely has impact and we'll see it, the rewards in the future. So thank you again for providing that opportunity.
Thank you. 4.82.
And next up is Mr. Don Hogan, our district athletic director. We'll be recognizing the students from Eustis High School, our softball champions.
State champions.
State champions. Is that right?
Did it right. Good evening Superintendent, school board members and parents. Tonight, we are recognizing the Eustis High School softball team for their state championship performance this year on the diamond and their overall excellence. This group is full of outstanding students and they epitomize the term student athlete. They had a team GPA this year of 3.57 and an unweighted GPA of 4.07. So let's give them a round of applause just to... Quickly tell you a little bit about the team's accomplishments. Eustis softball is the 4A state champion with a final record of 27-1 and ended the season on a 20-game winning streak. The only loss coming early in the year to another state finalist from a higher classification. The Eustis team beat the second and third ranked teams in 4A at states in Claremont to claim the championship. Max Prep's final ranking had the Panthers as the fourth best softball team in the state of Florida from all classifications. The way they were playing at the end of the season, they may have very well been the best softball team in the entire state, not just 4A. That is a real tribute to Coach Beal and her staff for getting the team to peak at the most important time of the year. And as an ex-coach, that's not easy to do. Now let's meet our champions. Senior Aubrey Ruby...oh, Ms. Lu, would you... Our senior Aubrey Ruby, she's on a full athletic scholarship to attend Wallace State Community College in Hansville, Alabama, next year. Senior Cassidy Ross. Senior Paris Key, she's on a full athletic scholarship to Polk State Community College. Sophomore Libby Levandowski. Libby was the Florida Dairy...oh, I'm going to talk about Libby anyway, even though she's not here. She was the Class 4A Softball Player of the Year by the Florida Dairy Farmers, and she is a finalist for the Miss Softball finalist for the entire state of Florida from all classifications. And she's just a sophomore. Senior Ariana Spaniccia. Ariana's going to Florida National University, and she also got the softball sportsmanship award for this year's team. Senior Jada Treister, she is on an academic and athletic scholarship to Montreat College up in North Carolina. Senior Natalie Rembert, who will be attending Florida Gulf Coast in the fall. Freshman Skylar Cloud. Junior De'Ani McKinley. Freshman Lilly Smith. Junior Kayla Ish. Senior Isabel Anduhar. Isabel will be attending St. Leo University on an athletic scholarship, and she was also the Offensive Player of the Year on this year's team. Senior Carly Steele on an athletic scholarship. She'll be attending Ohio Christian next year. Junior Lindsay Fielder. Freshman Audrey Mansfield. Freshman Jensen Luke, who was the Rookie of the Year on this year's team. Little hug bias there. Freshman Taylor Goff. Freshman Kirsten Taylor. Sophomore Jaden Bowers. Freshman Sierra Maple. And a couple of managers to round it up. We had Senior Emma Garbinsky. Emma's an outstanding student and has graduated magna cum laude. And lastly, but not least, we have freshman Kaylee Walker. And I did want to mention that Coach Beal was the 4A Coach of the Year. Her entire coaching staff can come on in. They did such an outstanding job this year. And no. Please shake everybody's hand. And they did a great job this year. And Coach Beal is also in the running for Coach of the Year for all classifications. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Good job. Congratulations. Good job.
Thank you. Great job, ladies. One more round of applause.
I just wanted to take a minute to tell the coaches again how much we, as parents and as a community, appreciate all of the input and the high expectations and the academic excellence requirement for these girls. We appreciate how much work you put into them every single day for a very long time. So congratulations. And to the community, I've said it before, I'm going to say it again, that the community has been outstanding. They have wrapped their arms around this team and these girls and these coaches. And parents to you guys for enduring all of this long season as well. We really appreciate the support for the girls. So congratulations, ladies. Well done.
Maybe seated.
Thank you. Thank you.
I should put it to you.
Okay, we all set? Okay, before we begin public input, I want to welcome everyone to this meeting. This time is set aside for the citizens of Lake County to address the school board. This will not be a question or answer time. It is not a political forum, nor is it a time for personal accusations or derogatory remarks to or about school personnel. If you would like to address the school board, please come to the podium, speak into the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to not more than three minutes. Your participation is welcome. We will be governing from our School Board Policy 1380.01 on civility. So the first comment we have is Dr. Tibbetts. Dr. Tibbetts, welcome. If you will give your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Madam Superintendent, Mr. Chairman, school board members, I have two things to say to you tonight. First, I want you to remember what just happened. You got to shake the hands of people who were state champions. In my 79 years, I had three that I knew that I could shake hands with. That was 45 years ago. This is a big deal. It will probably be tempered because this group of women could certainly be back here next year shaking your hands. But relish it is a wonderful accomplishment for their school, their parents, and themselves. Finally, I want to make just a brief comment on the naming rights policy that's coming before you tonight. It seems like a long, long haul, and I want to thank you, the Board, for creating the committee and Rob for chairing it to give you the opportunity to pass this policy tonight. The one thing that I looked on the discussion items and it says financial impact, none. How far from the truth that is. There's millions of dollars that will be raised by the change in acceptance of this policy. So I just wanted to have the opportunity to be here tonight and say thank you for the opportunity to serve on the committee. Thank you for your openness and thank you for your support. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Tibbetts. Mr. Vance Yocum. Mr. Yocum, welcome. Your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Hi Vance Yocum. Today, I don't have my audit hat on. I've got my fiscal ranger's community hat on. First, I'd like to say today's Flag Day or nearby is Flag Day because I was at a great ceremony today. And one of the things is that Ralph Smith, who I think most of you know, read a pretty great tribute by one of your own teachers, Kelly...I was going to say Ray Guthrie. Kelly Guthrie Ray, about her dad who was in World War II. And so we all want to celebrate Flag Days now and in the future. Next is that I keep getting...every morning I get this tablet and I go out and I look at news sources. I look at news sources that many of you probably don't watch. They're what I would call a conservative news sources, but they also are the ones that really have a lot of facts behind them. And more and more of them are coming out with two issues really. One is the inflation and that it's coming along. And I would suggest that from budget standpoint, you plan for inflation. I know a lot of your decisions for funds are out of your control, but believe me that it's going to get to the point where you're going to get caught in a squeeze between demands for salaries versus spending money for teachers and on the students. So I would suggest that you start researching that or ask staff to and keep track of that so that you can react faster and know what to do. Because I've been through it, I might have mentioned before, in County Los Angeles, when the Jimmy Carter years, it was 22% inflation rate. And even the banks in Germany are saying that the U.S. is heading towards a hyperinflation like the Weimar Republic had many, many years ago. So I would encourage you to start thinking about that. Either set up a committee or have some staff that start researching what the impacts are going to be on you. And then the other thing here is, and I know you have other people, maybe you're going to talk about CRT, which is not cathode ray tubes, which is what I thought it was when I grew up, but Critical Race Theory. And that, again, I've got a lot of sources here. I just put in the search term CRT. I must have 40 articles. These are all YouTube videos and news videos of parents across the country that are getting up and starting to really complain about this. And they even launched a recall effort to recall all of the school board in Loudoun County. So I know that you've had answers here and you guys are not, I think, part of that movement, but you should be aware of it and counter it because you may have people come in from some schools that think that that's okay to teach. It's a bias, in my opinion, my personal opinion. And so you ought to plan for that. And with that, thank you very much.
So thank you, Mr. Yocum. And the Superintendent's going to make a statement about it.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Yocum. And we've...several of you are here tonight to talk about Critical Race Theory. We do know that it is happening all across the country. And as you know, our governor last week petitioned to the State Board of Education that it not enter into our schools. And so I am here tonight to tell you, all of you, and we will certainly be communicating this to the public, that we are not teaching Critical Race Theory. We are not going to teach kids to hate America or to hate each other. It is not happening in our schools and it will not happen in our schools. And anytime that we find evidence to the contrary and it's been brought to our attention, we've intervened. So maybe someone found a magazine or they found a book that might have had some articles or something that had made its way into one of our schools. We're going to be looking at a formal process for parents, teachers, and others if they have concerns about any resources that find their way into classrooms, how we look at those, how we vet those to ensure that Critical Race Theory is not part of our instruction. We teach the Florida standards. We have no curriculum that contains Critical Race Theory, nor will we. And so I just want to say on behalf of this Board, we are going to follow the State Board rule. We're waiting for some additional guidance that will be coming as a result of the passing of that just this past week. They'll be coming from the Florida DOE to ensure that this does not happen. And I'm telling you, it will not happen. And when we find out that maybe someone has misstepped, we will intervene and we will make sure that it is not in our school. So just wanted to make that very clear to everyone here tonight.
Thank you Superintendent. Mrs. Shaver, if you'll state your name and record...or your name and address for the record, then you'll have three minutes.
My name is Tara Shaver. I've been a resident of Lake County for 25 years. I have three children that attended Lake County schools and five grandchildren that are up and coming. I had some concerns and issues that are growing, mostly it's distrust between the community and the Lake County school systems. When my children attended, parents participated and teachers and administration were receptive to that. I'm hearing all kinds of things that they are not at this time. And I would like to give you some examples of some of the distrust that I've heard. First, the school district created and trained their staff on non-discriminating policies that states and teachers must protect student gender identity, gender expression, sexual orientation without notifying the parents. Who are they protecting the students from? Is it the parents? Are you allowing elementary children to change their name, pronouns, and dress without a conversation with the parents, giving them no say in the mental health of their children? I could not find any policy, gender policy, or guidelines on the website to be able to look this up. And are you adopting the open bathroom and locker policy? Second, Governor...well, you already addressed that, so I won't even go into that. Last, why is Eastridge hiring a coach that has a criminal past? My son played football at Eastridge High for Coach O'Hara, and this concerns me. And I don't understand how you can have a hiring policy that does background checks, fingerprinting, okay, and still hire somebody that has that kind of a record impending, from what I understand, okay? And who decides what charges, if they do have a charge in their past, what is acceptable and what is not? And in conclusion, I would...I was on the website and I noticed Transparency Florida at the bottom of the webpage, and it gave real-time budgets. I thought that was great. You could see what the spending was, what the budgets were. Wouldn't that be great if parents had that kind of link to press and they could see everything that was going on in the schools, whether it was curriculum or, you know, hiring people like this? I think parents need to know that. Those are our children and we need to know who's teaching them. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you very much. Crystal Wolf. Mrs. Wolf, if you'll give your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Crystal Wolf from Lake County. I'm a parent of two students, and I attended a few weeks ago and spoke for the first time. At the last meeting, I couldn't help but notice two things. Number one, the picture behind you that reads, "Is it good for the students?" I personally think it should be moved to the wall behind us, parents, so that you all can read that and ask yourselves that question every time you have these meetings and are voting on curriculum, mask, transgender student guidelines, et cetera. However, it should read, "Is it good for all students?" Allowing natural-born males who say they identify as a female into our girls bathrooms and locker rooms is insane. It is sick, and I cannot believe that if any of you have daughters that you would allow this. The second thing I noticed is that before public input, Mr. Mathis made it clear both times now that this was not a political forum. Well, as a parent, I am asking that you tell our teachers to keep their political opinion out of the classroom. My high school student took time to apply and had to interview for a college readiness class, and that teacher not only had a political opinion during the election, but for whatever reason felt it necessary to continue their tirade throughout the entire school year. So much so that my daughter doesn't even want to continue the program next year if that of a teacher is going to continue being...teaching her. My daughter would come home saying that the teacher said this or the teacher said that about a particular president throughout the year, basically MSM talking points, and I had to steer her to the actual facts of whatever that opinion the teacher was pointing out. And I had to...and I don't want them indoctrinating my children. We want our children taught facts, not opinion. Yes, a teacher should teach our children about elections, how they relate to the Constitution, why we have an electoral college, why it's important to vote, but not give their political opinion on why they should vote for this candidate over another because they send out mean tweets. Sadly, this was not the only teacher who shared their negative opinion tirades throughout the year. Speaking of teaching our children, that brings me to the Critical Race Theory. Our governor has banned this, as you know and as you said, from being taught in Florida, but I have receipts showing that there are books being circulated in our school libraries in curriculum called Teaching Tolerance Under the Guise of Equity Coalition. This is the same thing as Critical Race Theory, no matter how you slice it and dice it, and it is racist curriculum. I read the excerpts of these books and I have screenshots of the material from school libraries right here in Lake County. Teaching children based on race rather than teaching them that all men are created equal as racist. You are literally segregating black students, telling them that they are systematically oppressed and because of it deserve a different type of education from a white student who is considered privileged. These books better be pulled out of Lake County schools and the libraries and not even considered to be taught to our children. We have smart children and my daughters will let me know what they're being taught. They will take pictures of this material for me to address. As a parent, I will not put up with this indoctrination. I will contact whoever I need to. I will contact the governor. I voted some of you in, I will vote you out. I will say, you're fired. The Lake County School Board members conduct...thank you.
Thank you very much. Mindy Laffeverz-Hodge?
Hi, my name is Mindy Laffeverz-Hodge. I live at 12748 Lake Shore Drive in Claremont, Florida. People want power or position detached from moral responsibility. When it comes to being held accountable for how they've used that power or responsibility, these same people will suddenly pretend their actions have no effect on the world. As I was reading this quote the other night, both this board and the coach from Eastridge High School came to mind. This board was tasked with power and position by the citizen voters of Lake County, Florida. The very highest of those moral responsibilities demand you protect our children. That is your highest calling. I am an educator myself. I understand that my private life demands that I behave in a way that when parents leave their children with me, they feel confident that their children will be well cared for. I send my daughter to Eastridge High School every single day, and I trusted each and every one of you, as well as the administration there, to vet every faculty and staff member. I put my blind faith and trust in you, and you all failed me. And now with the renewal of this contract, you're failing. of this contract, you're failing me and our community again. And I'm coming here tonight because I want you to look at me in the face and understand that I send a precious 15-year-old to that school every day, and you are allowing someone with a criminal and behavioral past to work in our schools and around our children. Apparently, someone at this district, as well as members of this board, are unable to Google, as that is all it took to find multiple articles on this gentleman. Researching him is a veritable treasure trove in discovering new and worse offenses and examples of poor decision-making. For example, February 2020 in the state of Alabama, he went before a behavioral board and was ordered to take an ethics course and an anger management course. Before we gave him his license in Florida, did we ensure that he had taken those two courses demanded by the State Board of Alabama in February of 2020? You want me to put my 15-year-old, 5'3", 97-pound daughter in a classroom with a man who had to take anger management? You're telling me this was the best candidate out of 60 candidates? You all know that that's not the case. You know he was hired because of his relationship to an administrator at the school. I don't care about friendships. I understand that people sometimes get hired for that reason. I care about my 15-year-old daughter. This board has chosen to ignore the outcry of the community and the parents of Eastridge High. That is a choice you can make. Voters, however, have a choice in a little over a year. There will be no running unopposed. I'll run if I have to. Claremont parents will ensure you have to answer for this personnel decision at the ballot box.
Thank you. Mr. William Comer?
Hey, it's William Comer. A quick little Shakespeare here to start out with. Lord, what fools these mortals be? First of all, to start out with the whole, you addressed, Mr. Cornigay, Mr. Cornigay, you addressed the whole CRT in the beginning. I know numerous teachers that went to and went over the ELA new book last week. There's CRT, Equity, SEL. All that garbage is all over that book. Parts on Pride, and they won't even give a copy of the book to the teachers because they don't want it to leak out. They don't want us to see it. Now, who wore those books? Did Felton have something to do with it? So she should be gone today. This is ridiculous. You guys are just changing the name of it. That's all you're doing. We're not stupid out here. We're not as stupid as you think we are. And I'll tell you what, if these preachers in Claremont, and Taverries, and Leesburg, and Eustis, and Mount Door get out here and bring their flock with them and protect these children, this will all be over today. Every bit of it. These preachers are real life, and all they're scared to come out. They're cowards. They're not even doing their job they're supposed to do. But you guys, y'all just call it a different name. That's all you do. It doesn't matter if your kid's black, Hispanic, Asian, white, doesn't matter. They're students to y'all. Start educating them, nothing else. This is ridiculous. And then this whole preoccupation, I don't know what happened in y'all's life that's so sad and pitiful, that you guys are so damn preoccupied with kids' sexuality. My God, I've got that, the internal document back there that shows where you guys are hiding from the parents, where you won't tell the kids. If there's a kid that goes by name Roman at the middle school, Eastridge Middle School, they won't tell the parents that. I'm not going to say her first name because, God bless her, what's happened to her in Bosseak Springs is ridiculous. And you guys allow it to go on every day. You don't do a thing about it. So don't give me that crap over there. But these, whether they're kids heterosexual, homosexual, or asexual, it's none of your damn business. They're children. Leave them alone. My God. And finally here, and once again, that ELA book, I've seen, she took some snapshots of it, some of the teachers, two of them did. I've seen it. There's equity all through there and stuff, and all this other garbage you guys do. You promoted a lady to a principal, took a knee. The greatest country in the world, and this woman took a knee, okay? She wouldn't have the opportunity she has anywhere else in this world, and she's not smart enough to realize that, and you guys promoted her principal out in Groveland. Moses is her name, okay? I'm not going to hide it. It's exactly who she is. You've got teachers influenced calling Jack in a beanstalk, and, well, you got to go non-binary and other kids, and tell these kids that they have to be, you know, you have to have a non-binary Jack giant or whatever. Come on. And plus, what are you doing, seventh grade Jack in a beanstalk? My God, my, my kids learn, we learn it in second grade. So it's about time you guys start, look, your job's simple. Educate kids, math, science, English, civics. Leave their sexuality alone, and leave this racism crap alone. I've got two black grandchildren and two white grandchildren. We don't go, oh, here are my black grandchildren. No, they're my grandkids. We love them. Kids don't think like that. My grandsons go out and play with kids. They don't look at the color of them. Come on, get over this garbage now. This is United States of America, the greatest country ever created.
Thank you, Mr. Comer. Matt Feeney? Matt? Matt Feeney? Mr. Feeney, if you'll give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Absolutely. My name is Matt Feeney. I live at 4282 Caplock Street in Claremont. I have two daughters that are, that go to your schools. One's in, just finished first grade at Lost Lake, one just finished sixth grade at Wendy Hills. The last day of school, we were eating dinner with our kids. My sixth grader, well, seventh grader now, asked us, "Are we Christian?" And we said, "Yes." Does that mean we're homophobic? Thinking about? Absolutely not. Doesn't mean that at all. We had a long conversation. Turns out that a young boy in, in the school had, had told her that in the classroom. We, my wife is on the sack for the school, and she immediately contacted Mr. Roberts, and he said he'll look into it, and he appreciated it. But after she asked us that, we had a long conversation. We said, "Yes, we are Christian, and we follow the Word of God and the teachings of Jesus Christ, but we also follow the words of Martin Luther King. That it's our job to judge a man not by the color of his skin, but by the content of his character." When you start talking about equity, this notion that you're trying to instill has been tried in the past. Historians called it radical reconstruction. The only thing that it created was the Ku Klux Klan, Jim Crow, and 100 years of racial divide. Trying to pepper in Stalin propaganda is like putting a lipstick on a pig. Equity is not created by bringing others down. Equity is created by elevating everyone to the same level. You don't take from one to create equity. It doesn't work. It didn't work in the 1860s. It didn't work with the collectivization of Soviet farms under Stalin. I appreciate your words. I will take them to heart, and I will have faith that you will back them up. But I hope you all understand that a change in heart needs to come at every level. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. David Sirdar?
David Sirdar, do I need to say my address and that?
Please.
66 Winter Green Drive, Fulton Park, Florida, 34731?
And you have three minutes.
Yep, and it was Flag Day, and I've been to a lot of events. And today is the day. My dad died three years ago, 11:16 at night. And I've told you, he was the principal same school he went to as a child. You know, there's a listening tour that went around the state for the Florida Department of Education. He didn't get out until May 28th. I was in Tallahassee when they'd made some laws that have changed things, and some of these parents maybe are just listening to them. But rules are being changed. I was just with Senator Kelly Sargile and Senator Vaxley at an event Thursday. Well, Charles Trump Broadway, the police chief, was there, and Claremont mayor from Claremont. You know, I'd love to get my job back. You talk about a citizen that worked his butts off that needs a job. I helped, the assistant principal, the only thing he had in his room was a defiance pitcher of the Martin, of the Olympics. I dated Johnny McChriss of a black Olympic star. What's that supposed to tell the other kids? You know, what's defiance? Defiance means we need to stand up for our rights. And, you know, driving home, I helped keep Lake beautiful yesterday, Saturday. I went to a lot of churches. You talk about a Martin Luther King person, I do, a lot of churches. You know, there's a lot of events. I go to Tallahassee. There's a listening tour that was three days, June 1st down in Miami. June 3rd, Osceola County, and it stopped in Baker County, I think, on the 6th. They sent me a, a survey. I went through it, it went to 49%, and then it went off the line. You know, there's glitches in computer systems right here in Lake County. Well, I went to a Marion County meeting, June 8th. Why is it posted June 22nd? You know, it's human errors. Human errors. Well, it's our kids' future, everybody's kids' future. You know, I don't care if you're black, white, or any of it. We are the human race. I went to the human college. I'm 65. I've got the light, spirit of life in me. And Tallahassee, there are a lot of new laws coming up. And thank God for our governor for what he's done, and his wife. Behavioral health, it was behavioral health, but it's what, drinking and drugging. I did talk to Mr. Neal about, I get fired. You're looking at the best custodian you ever had at Leesburg High School. And I need a job. I'd love to get my job back. And state champions in softball, we had that at my high school. You never forget these days. My second wife, I taught her how to play golf. She was a softball player. She went all over the country. You jump on a say, soft slow pitch, not the pass pitch. Third base coach, Milwaukee Bruce, my second cousin, but she lives in Claremont now. She turned pro, she hit one 305 yards. These girls, it's her life. This is an award that everybody loves. Eustace Mayor Holland, what a great talent. I was out there with Mr. Dever today, the city manager, who knows the history. Everybody knows the history. Well, you can't believe.
Mr. Sirdar, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you for your time. Those girls deserve flowers. Besides trophies.
Yes, sir. Mrs. Danny Page? Mrs. Page, if you'll come and give us your name, address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
I have some handouts so you can file along since you don't utilize your overhead. You could just pass them down.
Oh, just look at it and then pass it?
Yeah, you, well, there's, yeah.
Okay, got it.
Okay. Danny Page, is this on? Danny Page is inside Claremont, Claremont, Florida. Please refer to those handouts when I speak on Florida statute and the FAC. Also, one handout in particular, under FOIA allegedly, you'll see all of the aliases that Coach Edwards uses. Moving on. Okay, so it appears that after the second internal investigation into Coach Edwards, you still have not recommended, even at this time, after underage female students stepped forward with allegations regarding this, you know, his disparaging comments about their looks, body, seeing their underwear through their pants, and the mental capacity of their mothers, as well as discriminating against a few of his players for dating outside of their race, which are all in violation of Rule 6A 10.081 of the Florida Administrative Code. It's on your handout. What an embarrassment, you guys. What an embarrassment. You can't even do the one job you were elected to do, and that's to protect our children from conditions harmful to learning and/or the student's mental or physical health and safety, which is in clear violation of that same rule I just mentioned. Speaking of health and safety of students, were y'all aware of Coach Edwards doing naughty things at Forest Park High School in Forest Park, Alabama, public record? Alabama State Superintendent of Education was, and on February 7, 2020, he formally reprimanded Edwards by ordering, he complete a NASDAQ course that included educated relationships and boundaries. Wow. I'm guessing he didn't learn much, did he, about boundaries after allegedly grabbing the buttocks of a young lady and shoving her onto his dangly bits here at the high school just five months later? He also was ordered to take an anger management course. Gee, you think he would have learned something, you know, to tame his temper after that 2013 domestic violence arrest and charge, am I right? You know, according to your Florida statute, you actually had no right to even hire this slimeball. Furthermore, he should have been immediately suspended during the investigation, but he wasn't. Why is that, Cornigay? Can you look at me? Probably not. Because your Florida statute, per your Florida statute, you dropped the ball. Have a look, see there on the handout there for the chapter and subsection on that one. Let's not forget staff's allegation of sexual harassment by this scumbag. There's a ton of witnesses to it, by the way. And since y'all like titles, per Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, actually permits these staff members to sue the pants off of you, up to $300,000 plus their attorney's fees. Better be looking out for that one. So thanks for the big fat nothing burger. Like your smirk over there, Luke. So thanks for the big fat nothing burger, Principal Julie Llewellyn, Cornigay, and you, the five spineless wonders, for officially creating and contributing to the endangerment of children by not only hiring this clown, but not firing him. Since this investigation is officially closed, legally, you're able to speak to this question. Why? That's how we want to know. Your constituents, the parents, we want to know why. Why hasn't he been fired? We're waiting. Again, like the smirk, smirk there, Luke.
Your time's up.
My time's up.
That's it.
Yep.
Thank you.
And there's your sign, folks. They all need to go.
Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Page? Mrs. Page?
I heard you, Matthias.
Okay, when you were, when the investigators contacted you, what was your statement to them, since you have all this information? It was no comment. You had nothing else to add, right?
Which investigation? Because there's a DCF institutional investigation against your school right now. You're welcome. Which investigation?
You were contacted by investigators about the alleged incident with the, with the salesperson.
There's so many.
With the salesperson. You were contacted.
The simple battery?
You said you had no additional information.
No, I was not contacted. I contacted.
But now you share everything with us.
Okay, if you'd kindly shut your pie hole. I was not contacted. I contacted her. I reached out to her to give her additional information about the juveniles.
I asked you about when the investigators contacted you.
Investigators did not contact me from the Lake County Sheriff's Office.
You're quoted in the, in their report.
Well, it's a wrong quote, and I'll go on, I'll go on trial to testify to that. I was not contacted by the Lake County Sheriff's Office. I contacted Lindsay with the Lake County Sheriff's Office. I contacted her to give her additional information to supplement her report if she needed to about the three juvenile 15-year-olds that came to me on their own with allegations of their own. But since they were not criminal, it was just inappropriate speech to them. She was not interested and was very rude about it. And you can contact Major English with the Lake County Sheriff's Department, the Special Investigative Unit, and you can ask him what I said to him after I spoke to her. She was rude. So I spoke to him and said, "I didn't appreciate it." I was calling her to let her know.
Sorry, she was rude because you are incredibly obnoxiously rude.
No, I wasn't rude to her. I wasn't rude and obnoxious to her.
You are the most rude person I have ever met.
Well, that's coming from you because you're a liberal, so just shush.
Excuse me. Excuse me. My only question was.
I did not, I was not contacted by them.
It is in the report.
To answer your question, Matthias, I was not contacted, sir. I contacted Lindsay. I, well, it's false. I contacted her, and you can also contact Major English. He will verify my statement because I reached out to him to have her contact me.
If you have additional information, then the district would like to see it.
Okay, would, see what? My, my statement in an email? I don't, I'll do it.
You said you have proof about these other statements of.
Yes, I already sent them to Dave Meyer, your internal investigator during the second investigation. I have screenshots and emails from these juveniles. Yes, sir, I do.
Thank you. We'll check. Thank you.
I will.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Comer. Mr. Comer, civility, please. I stopped that conversation, and I'm stopping, excuse me. I stopped that conversation, and I'm stopping this.
Is that a threat, Ms.?
Stop. Wait, stop. Everybody stop.
Her, I have every right to say something to you, but you have no right to say something to a citizen. Read up on your rules and your laws, ma'am. You shouldn't even be sitting up there unless you know.
Mrs. Page, I spoke to you about our policy 1380.01 civility.
It starts up there. It starts up there.
I agree with that. We're going to move on now to new business? Okay, Superintendent?
I, I do just want to respond to that, to let the public know that that matter is being evaluated currently by the state attorney's office. All these allegations have been reported and have been handled in a matter that is in alignment with our school board policies and similar to any other complaints. And so it is under investigation, and it is currently with the state, the state attorney's office, and we're awaiting the, the final on that, and we will deal with it accordingly.
Mr. Matthias, I think Mrs. Dr. Felton is saying we have public input online.
Oh, okay. Okay, one public input, sorry.
That's all right.
Okay, go ahead. Mrs. Cronin, are you with us?
She said she's waiting. She just texted me and said she's waiting.
She's trying to connect.
I think, can you hear me now?
There we go. Yes, Mrs. Cronin, if you'll give your name, address for the record, and you have three minutes.
All righty, this is Kim Cronin. I represent SEIU's classified employees of Lake County School Board, and I live at 6531 Dewey Robin Road, Howland Hills. So, good evening, school board members and superintendent. I'm actually calling tonight to talk to you about some of your agenda items. I would like to first talk to you about agenda item 8.19. I'm sorry, I had my other phone on. So, I, I tried to get clarification on this during the week, and I did not. So, my question here is, I see it's an additional of $300,000 that is being used by capital outlay and general fund hyphen school hardening. So, I'm not really sure what, what that means. Is it coming from the general fund, or is there actually a grant? I'm not, I'm not sure. So, that's my question there. My other agenda item is 9.3, your therapeutic support assistant. So, I've looked at, I looked at the job description. I can't say I don't, I disagree with much of the job description, but I just, I know this is not going to be an easy job. I know it's going to be a difficult job to fill. I'm not sure if you're aware that already have highly qualified teacher assistants in E S D that is pretty much doing this job on a daily basis, dealing with some of these students that are in and out of our public school, and it's a live stream. You know, they're, they're highly qualified, they are CPI trained, and they're not making this kind of money. You know, we've talked about this for a few years now, that we have different classifications of teacher assistants, and they don't all, they all fall under one job description and one pay grade. This is something that we should not be doing, and we can't overlook it anymore. But, you know, we have teacher assistants that get beat up every day, and they go back the next day. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I, I see that you're going, you want these new employees to be, get trained. I'm hoping we can get that done before they actually go into a classroom. My other concern is with the bus drivers and the monitors. So, you know, they're not CPI trained. I, I did talk with Mr. Fender about that. He was going to get with Melissa Lieford to see if she could, she could provide training, so I'm not sure where that went to. But I'm, I'm really not keen on having one bus monitor on a bus. That's, it seems like we should have at least two bus monitors on a bus. And, you know, they, they're pay grade three, the lowest pay grade we can have in the district. That doesn't really seem right to me either. So, I just, I just wanted to bring some of this stuff to your attention. I know this is a new school we're opening up, but, you know, there are some other issues I think we need to look at.
Thank you, Mrs. Cronin. We'll, we'll get with you to address those concerns.
Thank you.
Right. Now, we're back to the agenda. We have a education ed foundation report.
Our first in-person meeting in a year. It's a shame I haven't been here. Superintendent, chairman, school board. The foundation has spent the past month really delving into our 2122 budget, and it moved through the finance committee today, and will be moving through the exec on Wednesday and to the full board on June 23. And our revenue projections are in at 1.3 million in that school year. We hosted 43 counties at the, from the consortium at the annual meeting in Mission Inn this past week, and Lake County was a hit. We took them on boat rides, and they just absolutely love our county. And we were able to spotlight the art department at Leesburg High School. Stepping Out for Education is sold out for Saturday night, and 53% sold out for Friday night. Mount Dora, South Lake, and New Matilla culinary chefs, as well as the chef at Lake Tech, are working to do a high-end reception for us and a dessert intermission. The dates are July 23rd, 24th. We will be offering some discount tickets for our school family, employees for the Thursday evening dress rehearsal, and those will go and sell the second weekend, July. Take Stock in Children has had an incredible couple of weeks. They received an unexpected scholarship donation from the Village Rotary Club, an amount of $12,000. And Bank of America came in as a $5,000 sponsor for their spelling bee on September 2nd. And most excitingly is they are scored on what is called a B S E, a basic scorecard, from the state, and that affects their funding. This year was a very trying year to reach the maximum in that funding. You have to have so many mentor sessions, so many per month. It's just a very balanced type of formula to get to, and our staff came in at 100 out of 100, so that made it eligible for the highest funding level. And I did get notification Friday night that we'd be receiving 123, 4, and 5, that's 5,000 more than last year. June 23, we're going to have a change of guard in the foundation. Joe McLaren will become our president. He is the VP and senior counselor for addition financial, and he is a graduate from Leesburg High School. Lori Baker, who is a local realtor, is a graduate from one of our high schools. Matt Hackler, he will become our secretary, and he's with Collier Financial Solutions. And his wife is one of our teachers at Beverly Shores Elementary. Rich Billings will remain as our treasurer. Alan Seabrook and Margot Odoms as our executive advisors. And our next meeting is June 23 at noon. Are there any questions?
I would just like to pass along some thanks. I know that I've had a chance to thank most of the folks in the district, but to you and the ed foundation for the closing ceremony in Claremont Middle, that was, was very nice, and I think so well done, and very well attended, so I appreciate you for helping make that happen.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mrs. Turner?
Thank you.
The only thing I have to report is just a reminder to the three of you who will not be named, that have not yet sent in your evaluations, please do so as soon as you can.
She looked at me. I'm just going to say that.
I looked around the room. The three, I looked around the room.
In that same breath, should we also note that the superintendent's evaluation period actually runs through June the 30?
So, we have time, is what Mr. Dodd is saying.
That's what I'm saying.
I didn't set the deadline. That would be Mr. Johnson. I'm not Mr. Johnson.
Everyone, that seemed to touch the nerve. On to new business, Superintendent.
There is no new business or unfinished business, so we're moving on to the consent agenda. And I'm recommending approval of consent agenda items 8.01 to 8.16, and 8.18 to 10.05 and 10.07.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five a. Okay.
So, moving on to the discussion items, and we're going to start with the emergency item that was brought to you by Ms. Turner, and she's going to speak to that.
Yes, thank you. As you know, we have an annual contract with the state Department of Health to do some of our services in school, and they requested an amendment be signed. That includes some e-verify language. That was a new statute that was passed. It's something we've already been doing in the district, so it's really not impacting anything. There's no financial impact, but they did request, even though the contract expires at the end of the month, they are requesting that we go ahead and sign the amendment. So, that is what you have before you, just as that statute requirement.
Okay. Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend approval of the amendment to the agreement with the Florida Department of Health.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five a. 11.02?
11.01.
11.01, sorry.
The item before the board is the tentative approval of the 2021-2022 Student Progression Plan. At this time, if there is any member of the public that wishes to speak to this item, please come forward. Are there any online? No, we have nothing online. Okay. Seeing none, I believe it's appropriate to close the public forum.
Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Recommend tentative approval of the 2120-2022 Student Progression Plan.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm sorry, you have something?
I just wanted to thank Francis and anybody else who helped wordsmith. I thought the language that was presented to capture our thoughts was just so clear and, and simple, and it was nice.
Thank you.
With that, I vote aye.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five a. Next.
11.02, the item before the board is the tentative approval of the 2021-2022 Code of Student Conduct and Policy Guide. If there is any member of the public that wishes to speak as to this matter, please come forward at this time. Seeing none, I believe it is appropriate to close the public forum.
Superintendent?
I recommend tentative approval of the 2021-2022 Code of Student Conduct and Policy Guide.
You've heard the superintendent. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five a.
11.03 is the tentative approval of policy P zero, or P O 7250, naming of school facilities. If there is any member of the public that wishes to speak to this tentative approval, please come forward at this time. Seeing none, I believe it is appropriate to close the public forum.
Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
I recommend tentative approval of the policy for the naming of the school facilities.
Do I have a motion? You heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five a.
These are all workshops.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Superintendent's report.
Just, just a few things. I'd want to let you know that at the conclusion of the month, the governor's emergency order does expire, and as a result of that, we will be ending the virtual public input and go back to face-to-face public input, starting with our July board meetings and workshops. So, I just want to make aware of that. We'll be announcing that on our, our websites and all of our social media pages to make sure everyone's aware of that. And also, there were several letters of condolence that were sent out over the past two weeks. First of all, to Jerry Griswold, she's a programmatic technical analyst in the Federal Education Programs Department, and she lost her husband, Stephen Griswold. Joy Stevens is the mother of Terry Stevens, who's a teacher at Seminole Springs Elementary, so our condolences to Terry and her family. And lastly, I would certainly be remiss if I didn't take a moment to acknowledge the life and legacy of Tammy Jerkins, math teacher at Leesburg High School, who was also named Florida's 2018 Teacher of the Year. She passed away last week, and she's going to be greatly missed by all of us. But her legacy will live on in the lives of the students she taught and so many teachers that she mentored, and so I send my condolences to her and her family. And with that, that's all I have this evening.
Okay, board member comments, and we'll start with Mrs. Luke.
I wanted to give a quick thanks to Ms. Sherry and to Doug Major and to Mr. Hogan for their recognition tonight. It was a lot of girls that had to be in here and their families that wanted to celebrate with them, and so there was a lot of conversation around how to make that work, and you guys made it work beautifully, and so we appreciate. Can't talk into my microphone and look at you, but we appreciate you thinking through that and the recognition for the girls. It is a big deal, and it is maybe a once-in-a-lifetime, hopefully twice, maybe three times in a lifetime, four, four, four times in a lifetime opportunity, but we're, well, we are grateful to have been a part of it this year, for sure. I don't, I typically won't speak off the cuff about this. Tonight, I think it was a good reminder of why we don't go back and forth in public input, because it turns into an opportunity for people to yell and say outrageous things, and no, nobody gets heard, and we certainly want to hear the voices of our citizens, and we want our voices to be heard as well. And so, I think sometimes that gets miscued in the, in the public and the social sectors that we just sit and don't listen and respond, but tonight was a real good reminder of why. I kind of feel like it was taken hostage a little bit this evening, and even to say something now, I feel like would, would maybe end in the same response. And so, it's for me to listen and having a 15-year-old daughter who's here tonight, that everybody can see eyes, that we are people and we have children in these schools. If she made an allegation about a teacher, it would 100% be investigated, and there's not a member of this school board that I could speak for that wouldn't attest to that. And that, that is something that we do, and we do it right, and we do it thoroughly. And if you have questions and concerns, if you would just reach out to us rather than come here and make it seem very vile and evil and cynical and untrustworthy, and as a parent, it hurts my heart to hear that happening. So, please reach out to us. We do serve our constituents. We will respond. We will sit and meet with you, as I know you have, Mr. Mathias, you have attempted to with some of the people, but when you are unwilling to listen to a response is when it becomes the, the atmosphere that's being conducted. So, that's all I have to say about that.
Mr. Dodd?
You know, I, I think that tonight's agenda is a great example of, of some of the work that goes in beyond just these bi-monthly meetings. You know, as we talked about just how quickly we, we approved some of these items, I think what a lot of the folks fail to realize is that we, we did quite a bit of workshop conversation on these things, and that your staff works very hard to capture those thoughts that we all throw at them, and for us then to come to some sort of agreement. So, I think a big thanks to all the work that goes into these, these major documents every year, and for it to be so smooth. You know, as you, as you watch other school boards around the state or the country, and some of the contention and division among their members just, just shows you that they're not on the same page. And with, I guess, the idea of getting on the same page, Dr. Felton, I just want to throw out some thanks for today's session that you, that I had a chance to attend. Were you still, do we still call it Destination Lake? Whatever we, I guess, maybe it's grabbing a name from the past, but, you know, I just love the idea of being able to, to get these folks in a room and, and recommitting to what's, what's, what's important. I had the chance to sit with the administrative team from East Ridge Middle School, and we had some great conversations about what are some of the takeaways from the pandemic that, you know, would be worthwhile in, in seeing continue. You know, what are some conveniences that we've put in place that, that would be great tools in the future, and some of that were pieces of technology. And we also talked about what are, what are some of the things that we are just most eager in seeing come back, and one of those were the, the opportunities for parents and our volunteers to come in, not only celebrate kids, but to be part of that, that, that voice and the hands from the community to come in and just be part of our school system again. And so, I'm, I'm really looking forward to a very refreshing start of the year. It's hard to believe that we're already talking about that, because I feel like we just departed, but, but I know that it takes a lot of work to, to get a vehicle like this going and going strong. So, so it's, well done. The work is beginning so early and I'm excited.
My turn?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. You know, I sat here tonight and it made me very sad. I have given 35 years of committed service to this district as an employee and I have probably been in the position of anybody who's in the room. I've been a parent, I've been a taxpayer, I've been an administrator, and now I'm on the school board. And I can truthfully say that I don't know anyone who goes out and goes to the trouble of running for office and takes an oath. And they do not do it with the intent of doing their job with integrity. I can assure any member of the public that that is certainly our intent on this board. I can tell you that I have witnessed very turbulent times in Lake County as far as the board versus the public. I have also sat in very tense rooms with other administrators and other angry parents who were very angry with me. I spend a great deal of my time as being a principal. But, the one thing that I think stands out most is that when we come together, we may not agree when we walk in the room, but we ought to respect the opinion of everyone and we ought to be able to sit and we ought to be able to discuss the issue. And being that we're all intelligent people, we should be able to come up with a solution that works for everyone and causes no one to be hurt. I'd like to thank Carmen, I know she's gone, but she, are you there Carmen? I can't see. I think she's gone. But, our Education Foundation Director. I'd like to thank her for her many years of service. Carmen kind of slides under the radar and people sometimes don't realize how much she gives. As a principal, I can't tell you the number of times she's helped me to make sure that a student who needed to be able to get away to school or something else that they needed, she was able to help me provide that. I'd like to also note Francis Sellers and Ms. Dylan Banks. They came to us in a workshop the other week and they brought some new policies, well, they weren't new, but the new student progression policy and the code of conduct. And as board members, we had some concerns and they went back and they worked very diligently and I actually received their changes while I was at the School Board Association State Conference. And I was just amazed at how quickly they had been able to regroup and come back with what we needed. And with that said, I'd like to thank the taxpayers for the opportunity to have attended the State Board of, School Board Association members this past week in Tampa. It was a very beneficial experience. I learned some things and I have some great ideas and I would love to share with anyone who would like to hear. So, with that said, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Burns?
I wanted to comment on the word equity. I've read very clearly what the, the governor asked the board to write for him and then they wrote it and, and made it a state rule. So, but what he didn't mention is the word equity. And I wanted to point out to people the word equity as much as, I don't know, his name is Chris Ruffio, Ruffo, and you can Google him. He's the one who created this CRT thing. As much as he says that equity is in CRT, equity is its own thing. And the Florida Department of Education has an equity website and has been monitoring equity since 1994 when Bush brought it in as part of No Child Left Behind. So, we have been monitoring equity in Lake County since 94. When we, so practically what we're doing is the same thing we've always done. We look at the subgroups. Subgroups are kids like ESE, white, black, Asian, Latina, male, female. They're made, they're stated by the district or by the nation. And what has shown over time is that there's a big disparity. There's a big gap and achievement gap between black kids and white kids. And what we were doing on the July, no, sorry, February 1, I think it was, was looking at those statistics. And what we found, we found some important stuff. We found that black children in Lake County were two times more likely to be in remedial classes and two times more likely to be retained than their white counterparts. And they're three times more likely to be suspended. So, if you think about that, if children are not at school, they cannot learn. That doesn't mean that we punish black kids different from white kids. That means that we look for maybe more effective punishments. Maybe we figure out why they're bored and acting up. Maybe, I don't know, like the solution that we proposed was to have our staff look at the numbers, which is what we asked our staff to do. We asked our staff to look at the numbers and come up with their solutions. And, and that's really it. Like, that's, was our equity meeting. I'm not talking to you. And, so that's, that's the solutions and we'll see what comes up. But, this is the process through which. I do think that we obviously are having a little bit of difficulty communicating with the public and I wanted to recommend maybe we talk with local people or perhaps we contract with someone that can work with our communications department and maybe develop new strategies to help let people know what we are doing. Because I know that transparency, sunshine is the greatest, you know, disinfectant equalizer will, everyone will know. And maybe that's a way to tell our story because we have so many things that we're doing for all different kids. We are increasing vocational education. We're doing CRT. We're doing acceleration programs. We differentiate nonstop for almost all of our, did I say CRT?
Yeah, you did.
Sorry. That was a forehand slip. We do vocational programs and acceleration programs. I don't know how that became CRT. Sorry. Obviously, it's on my head.
CT.
CT. That's what it is. CA, right. Okay.
Career and Technical Education.
Career and Technical, it's CT. So, I wanted to let people know that. Also, I wanted to comment on why that just happened. I wanted to make sure that the general public knows that the lady who is in here was angling to do this. This was her goal. She wanted to get kicked out. She said so on her Facebook page. She's, she's running a social media site with the intent of earning money. And I have found that the way she does it is very much like a con artist. She finds a kernel of truth, maybe that, there's something about a coach and then she runs wild with it.
We need to not do that.
And then, I think that the public needs to know this, Bill.
But, but, no, what's good for the goose is good for the neighbor. We don't allow...
The gander got a chance. I want the goose. Why not?
Please.
You're the one that started and you burst out against her, laughed out loud. She's having an exchange with Mr. Mathias and you're the one that jumped in and got everything wrong.
Please, can we stop this? Let's not go on with this about her. You're giving her more credit than she deserves. Okay?
I think people in Lake County, I will stop, but I think people need to know that that woman is a fraud and is lying to them.
Please.
And I'm there.
Dr. Burns? Let me...
That was my report.
It's recorded, yeah.
And it's recorded. It's good that it's recorded. I need the public to know this.
Okay, okay, we're going to move on. Excuse me. Excuse me. We're not going to have an exchange. I said that.
Why don't you let her make a comment while you're making her back it up?
I stopped the comment, right?
No, you said it. You didn't stop it.
Mr. Comer, I'm not going to have a debate with you either. Okay, in a bit I will, but not right this minute. Okay? So, I want to first, I want to first move and speak about Tammy Jerkins and the, and the amazing job this board did. Shortly after, shortly after she became Teacher of the Year in 2018, her nephew reached out to me and he was, and told me that she was seriously ill. At that time, our board, our school board policy that you had to be deceased to be recognized. And this board, the SAC Committee first of Leesburg High School came to us and recommended the naming of the Media Center. This, this school board quickly came together to rewrite the policy, had the public hearings, and all of that, we were able to honor with naming the Media Center after her while she was still well enough to appreciate it. And that was on my mind as, as I was in the parade that went around her house and she was too ill to come, but she was watching it livestreamed to her. I think that Lakefront TV has done a legacy kind of video that I haven't seen yet, but I heard it's really amazing. And so, to a, to a great teacher whose heart was always there, she is now at peace. And I'm at peace. This board did the right thing by recognizing her while she was still healthy enough to stand there and, and see the building dedicated to her. So, that's about that. As far as the meeting tonight, you're absolutely right that I should not probably have asked Ms. Page a question. However, the police report was pretty clear that she was interviewed and that's the only thing I wanted to clarify because she brought things to us tonight that some was new to me. Some I know we've investigated or, and we are investigating. So, and to the, to the trust issue, I think it is important that we're transparent and we're trustworthy and that we are taking care of our kids and that is a huge priority, like number one, right? And so, you should be able to expect that and trust is important because when it's lost, then all is lost. So, we'll work harder, I guess. Okay? So, with that, the meeting's adjourned.